Lay those all out. But one of the big partners in this project is the Maine Department of Transportation, who has agreed to work with the town to secure funding for this project. Basically, all these state routes intersect here in the town. And as part of those routes intersecting, the state does have some responsibility to help us manage the movement of traffic coming in from all these different directions as we are a pass-through town. And so we'll talk about the efforts that we've gone and the visioning. And then we do have MDOT to share a few words about their partnership with us and as far as securing funding and things of that nature. So I'll turn it over to Russ now to kind of go through the vision that the committee has worked on. We do have our town engineer slash project manager, Mike Thomas, here as well, who kind of took on the leadership role in Councilor Gass's place. So we've been keeping the momentum going.
Actually, there's just one more component to that is the stormwater was also a key starting point for us here, where we have to replace the ancient stormwater system that we have that runs through the middle of the village. That was one of the things that also got us headed down this path.
Thanks for mentioning that.
Yeah, thank you, Mike. Nice to see everyone. Thank you for having me here. I really want to kind of walk through at a high level. There's a lot of history to how we got here, but I think also like there's a lot of detail that has been really scrutinized over the months leading up to this, both by us, by folks on the committee, by D O T. So it's really been a collaborative effort and I think down to feet and inches at this point. So I think there's a real clear target for where we want to get to with the street design. I think we should back up to like really the overall vision for the center of town here came out of that charrette that actually we held in this room. You know, and sort of that vision for the village center is really what's driving a lot of this. And I think how you look as a town at economic development really has to play a part with what does the private sector do and what does the public sector do with the right-of-way and that sort of physical environment that we can create? And I think that's where both safety, convenience, walking, biking, all of that can kind of be packaged together in this village center in a way that is really exciting. So I think I'll take you through just to kind of orient everyone. There's a lot going on. I think this map, and it's hard to read on the small screen here, but we can zoom in on it from one. There's a number of different projects that actually overlap or connect to one another. And we kind of put those all on one map to make sure that we're kind of talking about that whole list. And you mentioned stormwater. That is that sort of on here as well. Like, how do these all overlap? How do they intersect? So we're getting a comprehensive kind of holistic view of where the planning is going to the village center. You know, I think as we heard over the years of kind of planning with the town of Gray here, that the community really feels like there needs to be a there there in addition to kind of moving the cars through and the trucks through. So I think when you go out there today, if you know, we walk from here over to one of the stores, get a coffee, try to do something that is convenient by foot or bike, it's challenging. And I think there's that sort of mobility balancing of the village center that is very much driving a lot of what we're doing. And then also, how do we make it just easier to navigate as a vehicle as well? So I think, you know, in some of the work we did kind of at the visioning, kind of overall planning scale for the neighborhood was really about, you know, both buildings and street. This is really looking at the right-of-way. What can we do through a streetscape project or a kind of comprehensive rethinking of the right-of-way area? I think what's interesting about this view now is you really don't feel as a pedestrian or as a human comfortable in that space unless you're surrounded by two tons of metal, you know, sort of that kind of environment. But we can still move those cars through and reclaim some of that space. And I think that's what's interesting in this rendering is sort of just by kind of realigning the intersection, you know, doing some good things with the geometry, we can get some, whether it's garden space, park space, people's space back into the village center. And then, you know, in the future, what happens on the private sector side of the sort of property line, what would be sort of a next step for the community to think about? So this is sort of the core of the village. And it's sort of, we've set this up in kind of distinct sort of sections. I think the core is really like that five-minute walk from sort of center to edge, the sort of main street, kind of traditional main street sort of setting that the village historically has had. You know, the big move here that you can see at this map is not just the street trees or the landscaping, but like kind of that overall environment is sort of conducive to both bikes and vehicles. And we'll go through intersection by intersection to talk through the details. But really, the goal, I think, is a three-point sort of element. It's how do we bring people off the highway and then get them through the village? And how do we do that in a way where they behave and work with people who are wanting to be going around the village or into the village in ways that that makes sense? So we're still thinking that people will kind of be able to go through, but just at a slower speed and at a more sort of comfortable pace. The second is how do we discourage cut-through traffic on Brown Street? So you'll see there's a really different trajectory for Brown Street and how that intersects with both Falmouth and the main intersection at Main Street. And then, you know, how do we actually handle the streetsing itself? And this is both street trees, all those sort of classic things we'd see in a historic village center. Street trees, good sidewalks, good parallel parking, nice crosswalks for getting back and forth. So we're trying to kind of knit together all the properties so that, you know, someone's on one side of the village and they want to go get a coffee or, you know, go get lunch, they walk. Like, it's a nice brisk walk rather than a couple-block drive. So that's sort of at a high level. Then there's sort of these, I've kind of always thought of them as like legs or sort of arms stretching out from the village where, you know, folks who live down, you know, might only be a 10 or 12-minute walk away, but they're not getting, they're not walking into the village now. You know, they're maybe getting in their car. Or we heard from a lot of folks during the visioning that they walk for exercise, but they feel like it's a kind of difficult, challenging activity. So the idea that like as we reach out to like a 5, 10, 15-minute walk away or a 5-minute bike ride away, how can we improve access to the village so people choose to have a more active lifestyle or have the ability to get into the village without getting in their car? So some of the work that the town's previously done, we've kind of married into this comprehensive plan for the village streetscape. And this is new sidewalk, some streetscape improvements, some landscape improvements coming into the village. And that kind of stretches all the way down, you know, almost a 10, 15-minute walk outside of the village center. On the other side of the village center, and this is Old Collie Road, and sort of that intersection there that is your kind of classic sort of split in the road. It's really just sort of, you know, slowing those cars down, making that an easier intersection to navigate, kind of creating a hard left-right turn, you know, where someone will have to actually stop. And then there's sort of an interesting confluence of the path that actually comes out and around to the parks back here. And the potential for how we get folks who are bike-riding up sort of the north, northwest of town of the village center. So we're envisioning kind of streetscape improvements there with a multi-use path. So that would get, you know, there might be folks who are riding further afield or kind of on a recreational ride that are on the shoulder. When you come into the village center, we actually want to kind of induce a safer environment so folks who might live within a 5, 10-minute walk could ride bikes in. And that's the idea here for the sort of edge of town as you come into the main street. So here, this is at the intersection of Brown today. And, you know, it's interesting to look at this, the current condition with the proposed. And you can just see the kind of dramatic shift in the amount of asphalt out there. And I think that's sort of part of the kind of, not just taming of the streets, but the sort of like, how do we actually balance the mobility needs of vehicles with sort of all those other users of the street? So what we've done here is, you know, kind of tightened up the intersections so the crossing, the crosswalks are shorter. We've realigned some of the streets so that those through routes across are a little easier. And we've added in the new streetscape improvements. So if you just kind of bounce back and forth. And you can see this, this is sort of classic over time, over 20, 30, you know, as paving projects, as, you know, that sort of, you know, lane width expands, the sort of travel speeds increase, and sort of that's sort of pulling back and saying, let's, let's make sure this works for all users. So this is here at Collie Hill Road. And you can see here that sort of very classic going out of town, sort of fork in the road, you know, this sort of really hard turn of the neck, like how do we sort of fix that issue and make this as just a safer intersection? So what happens here is we kind of bias, you know, kind of bias the traffic on one of these roads and then sort of full stop on the Collie Hill Road connection. And then the connection here to the off-street path and the kind of multi-use path that would head to the north. And then we're envisioning, you know, what kind of was the work that came out of Village Center vision plan is these connections to potential future development at the kind of catalyst site there that the town's been talking about. All right, so jumping back to the sort of other fork in the road here is at Brown Street. You know, a lot of folks, we went back and forth on this early on in the process, but really this sort of idea of shaping a space here at the intersection of Brown and Falmouth is really what has kind of stood the steps of time as we've looked at this and kind of tightened up the street design. This has really got a new pocket park, you know, sort of brought Brown Street in. So if you were going to take a, you know, today you can kind of just sort of meander into Brown Street coming down the hill, you'd have to take a true hard right-hand turn maybe then. So that would kind of really calm traffic and kind of slow down people who are consciously choosing to kind of do that route. So that favors, you know, the street coming, you know, the intersections and we'll talk about this in a second. It's like, how do those two intersections play with sort of regional trips versus like local trips? And then this sort of envisions a nice tight intersection for pedestrians as well, you know, accessing down towards the library. And here we are in the kind of main intersection, right? And I think that's, you know, this is one of the, this was a real puzzle. And I think it kind of comes into, you know, how we get big trucks through and get, as well as pedestrians, cyclists, and sort of generally make this into a much safer sort of environment. So if you see there, you know, today, you've got those two little islands that are out there. And I kind of invite everyone to go stand on those and kind of just watch the behavior at random, you know, kind of random times of the day. But it's really, we've lost the clicker here. There we go. So what we realize is that because of the nature of that intersection, we can have multiple signal phases. And that actually allows us to kind of tighten through the intersection. So it really functions like a four-way intersection now. It's just kind of squeezed a little. And then we've checked this with some auto turn and kind of the larger truck templates. Some of these sort of turns are, you know, can still work for big trucks. And I think as we continue to progress the details, like where are those stop bars are set and how the signal timing works, you know, and the trucks will be going through ideally slower than they are today. You're not seeing, you know, people come through there at a good clip. And then you'll see also the introduction of some bike lanes. And I think this was sort of, you know, earlier versions of these had much more extensive bike lane networks, but, you know, the challenge is your, some of these roads are still quite narrow. And I think it's like, how do you actually get good cycling and good pedestrian comfort? And that comes down to how do we control for speed and make sure everyone sort of, that driver is getting eye contact with a cyclist on the street? But then there's also some opportunity where you could have some off-street cycling facilities. And I think that's sort of connecting up to some of the larger regional kind of desire lines that we're seeing to some of the other cycling destinations. And it's also that kind of reaching out of arms out of the village center to sort of attract some of those folks who live near the village but might not feel that they're in the village to, you know, walk or bike. So I think there's a couple of opportunities for that that you can see in this plan here, going down Portland Road and then it sort of connects into a series of sharrows which are sort of slower-moving, you know, the bicycle paths along the center of the village. And that's, that's all the details, you know, sort of. I know that was a lot all at once, so if you have other questions, we can zoom in and look at particular properties, driveways, whatever, whatever the council would like. But again, I think it's been a really great process with D O T at the table and being able to work through a lot of those details in collaboration. So I kind of commend, you know, having worked in a lot of states where that doesn't happen, I think this has been a great process. And Gray's really fortunate to have this partnership going on. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for your interest. Is there anyone on the council that would like to make a comment?
Yeah, I'll just make a general comment. You know, I've lived in Gray, not my whole life, but more than half my life, I think. And in that time period, there hasn't been a huge amount of private investment in the village. And I think for the longest time, you know, people thought, well, you know, we should just, it's not the town's job to fix stuff, you know? It's, business should come in and build sidewalks or do whatever they're going to do. And, you know, I guess I just, my point of view is that's not correct. There is a role for the public sector in taking care of these things that, yes, I mean, perhaps business and industry might contribute to, like maybe they contribute to a sidewalk or something like that, but if they're coming in new and a new sidewalk is being built. But it's really up to the town to, and, you know, and where it's applicable, the state to create the infrastructure that makes it possible for business to function. And so that's really what we're talking about doing here is laying the template, replacing the 50 to 75-year-old storm drains that are failing and, you know, fixing those, introducing some measure of sanity to those two intersections, to the two main intersections, and just sort of quieting the traffic, calming the traffic so that there's a balance. It's not just the, you know, it's not a town that's just for cars and trucks to zoom through. It's for all of us, people who live in the village, people who live in Gray and want to come to the village to shop, but, you know, don't because it's just not attractive to do that at this point. So the, you know, I, this has been a multi-year process, and I guess that's just the other thing I want to emphasize. This vision builds off of Gray's 2020 comprehensive plan that was improved by voter, by an overwhelming majority of voters in 2020. And then we went ahead and hired Principal Group. They did a, what Russ referred to as a planning charrette in July of 2022. And then we've been working since then with MDOT and, you know, various other folks, you know, on staff and on the council to kind of come to this vision. And I guess, I keep saying this is my last point, but I do want to emphasize in case anybody's having a heart attack, is that we're not expecting the voters or the taxpayers in this town to shoulder the bill for this. You know, we're looking to other sources of funding, but it was really necessary to have the plan and the vision in place first before we went shopping for that money. So that's kind of where we are now. Does that make sense?
Yeah, very good. Thank you. Anyone else?
No, I actually have a question about this. So right now, it's a mess up there as we all know. The way I'm looking at this, are we saying that we, so we're coming from this direction, that we really go straight and then take a left? Because kind of now, it kind of goes to the left, but then you have to bat to the right to go in that direction. This looks like it's going to pretty much go straight to the right and then you have to take a hard left to go. Is that kind of what we're showing?
Yeah, it's interesting. So it's easier to kind of go like almost leg by leg.
Yeah.
And I think, you know, if you're coming off the turnpike, for example, you know, that you'd get a green signal. And I know my mouse is kind of small, but, you know, and you could go straight or take a right, you know? And then there might be a leg where, you know, Portland Road and Main might have the same signal and you're going, you know, you're being able to go straight, but there might be a signal phase that you can take a left and a left. And then, you know, Yarmouth Road might have a signal where it has a free flow and takes a left and goes straight or takes a right when no one else is moving. So I think there's that kind of three-legged sort of signal timing that allows us to work.
Okay.
Yeah.
Did we also discuss for this intersection having one of the smart signals as an upgrade?
I think, you know, it's interesting, the streetscape work we're doing kind of around New England, that, that's happening more. And I think it comes down to like, you know, what's the right technology solution? And I think this is, you know, if you've ever sat there and there's been no one going through the intersection at times, I think I've even experienced that. Like that, this is probably a classic example, but I think that's something that could be studied further.
And just to follow up, separate comment, but the bike lanes are indicated here in those green stripes down Portland Road.
Yeah, kind of neat, like green.
So those would be separate from the roadway?
Yes.
As kind of shared with the sidewalk or would they be part of the roadway?
So there's a few different ways these are done now. This one we're showing is a protective bike lane, so they would be, whether it's at the sidewalk level or it's at the street level, we've seen both versions.
Right, right.
I think that, you know, once it starts to look at like actual stormwater grading and all that, it might make sense to have this at sidewalk grade locations. That's the prefer because it really elevates the cyclist up, the sightlines are better. You know, it takes some kind of, at the intersections, it takes some coordination and maybe it may be a little bit differently than people are familiar with.
Yeah.
But overall, we found that, you know, as you handle intersections with these elevated and, you know, we're even seeing, a couple of our projects putting elevated crosswalks in so that the pedestrian or, you know, someone in a wheelchair doesn't go down or way up onto the car level and come back up, but the cars go over the sidewalk, over the crosswalk. So I think that details something that will definitely get worked out in the next phase. The thought here is this is a much more comfortable way for someone to, within a five or 10-minute ride of the village, be able to get in here and not feel like they're riding the cars.
Okay, thank you. That's helpful.
Yeah. Russ, could you also talk about the center road kind of adjustment as well?
Yeah, let me go back to that one and let me zoom in.
Yeah, but that's okay. That's okay. We'll come back to this.
So right now, if you see Brown Street here, it sort of comes through. We heard from a lot of folks that people come down the hill and kind of rock it through. And there's a lot of sort of cut-through traffic that we wanted to divert. So in working with everyone on the team, and this is gonna, I think this is building on some information that came out of the 2022 work that the whole town participated in, is that, you know, there's this sort of natural relief valve that Aroma Joe's driveway is providing, like people are kind of going out that route. And, you know, that got us to thinking about some of the sort of underutilized land, if you kind of walk around there now between the parking lots and that, we could actually create sort of a small street that connects Brown Street to Yarmouth Road. And that would sort of allow, if you're coming from Brown, you sort of formalize that connection that's happening organically now for Aroma Joe's. And then that would allow us to discourage through traffic, but also create a kind of slower-moving village center. You know, so you see here, here's a new park that's actually kind of attached to the McDonald's sort of lot there. And that, that working with a few of these private property owners will allow us to sort of tame that intersection in a much more human-scale way and kind of still accomplish kind of the overall goal that we set in 2022, which was to really create Brown Street as more of a neighborhood sort of village center street and less of a cut-through street.
It also meant the center road, the one, the one off of?
West Gray.
West Gray Road over, over Moore? Right there where we, we closed it off?
Center Street.
Right, oh yeah, it connected to this, yeah, sorry.
Yeah, right there, that one.
Yeah.
So another interesting thing here with center, with sort of the, the way this network works is part of the way this intersection could be improved is by cutting down this center street curb cut or connection here and moving that further back away from the intersection. So you see here what's envisioned as a new intersection that's closer to the turnpike connection. And what's happening also, sort of similar to the Aroma Joe's connection, is, you know, people are cutting through this parcel's parking lot essentially now that's connecting center over to Portland. So kind of formalizing that connection and then, you know, sort of rationalizing the kind of distance between these two intersections so that folks on center road will still be able to make the two connections that they're already doing, just in a kind of more organized kind of friendly fashion. And I think what's interesting about that is like, I think the center road is actually more connected now than less connected by closing that, like that one location and moving it. And then I think, you know, that at a high level is sort of similar to the Aroma Joe's and sort of how we're dealing with Brown Street, is creating new block connections, you kind of kind of creating more intersections and introducing some side streets, which is conducive. And that was something that came out that was not entirely fleshed out in the 2022 plan. So another kind of important piece here.
While you're there, Russ, with the center street changes, where you're coming up from the turnpike, continually now that space gets filled in by cars.
Yeah, yeah, I see that.
In this scenario, I don't really see that changing unless frankly, you have another light that linked with the one that comes into the village.
So the queues here, I mean, there's a, the sort of block the box issue that's happening at center, that will go away. So I think there, I've seen folks just sort of fill that whole area in.
Yeah. Why wouldn't that happen here?
Well, so I think that's a question of how, and this is the balancing between how much do we want the sort of clearing of that intersection, the performance of that intersection? And something that we're having a lot of conversations about with transportation professionals and other D O Ts is, in a village center like this, that's more mixed-use, more walkable, like has different modes of transportation coming to it, that intersection might not want to perform as good as one, you know, a mile or two out of town. So you're not looking at a C, B, A. You might be tolerating a D or even an F in certain situations. And that means during peak hour, you might actually have to wait a cycle or two to get through. But that sort of is this balancing act we're seeing between like creating an environment that is conducive to mixed use and kind of all the kind of things that a village center needs to do, and not designing for that kind of peak hour that then during all the other hours, you're getting through traffic that's going too fast or all the kind of other byproducts of that. So that's the sort of balancing that we've been trying to do.
Sure.
So I think that as we continue into the details of this, will you still get some Q-lacks? Probably. But that's where the sort of village center will always have some congestion. I mean, that's like, you know, you think of good congestion and then there's bad congestion. So I think that's just that balancing act of getting that right.
We're not going to eliminate it all. If you slide the image up so we can see the, what, the Route 26 now sort of down, if you would.
Yes.
And, yeah, there you go. I mean, right now, one of the things, one of the issues, and again, like you say, you're not going to solve all the problems, you're just going to try and make things better, is the ability to queue cars up that are trying to turn down towards the turnpike. You know, in that scenario, I can easily see that the cars would be backed up to that new intersection there. Because currently, you see them sort of backed up there now.
Right, coming down.
Trying to go up into the village.
Going through, yeah, and, yeah.
Yeah. So that, which, you know, the driveway, the parking lot that everybody cuts through now. So that's, you know, that doesn't mean that it's not a good idea to put that road in there, but I think that is an issue that, you know, we'd have to think about whether it's a turning lane from that intersection all the way to the next one or however we do that, just to allow for being able to stack as many cars as we can while not clogging up the through lane.
Yeah, and I think, let me see if I can zoom in here on a different drawing. You know, you'll see here, when you study this in more detail, that like there, there's a through and a left-hand turn and then a turn.
Yep.
And we went back and forth about sidewalks, enough room for street trees, and like, I think that's where we continue to study this and looking at the sort of, you know, to these two intersections, there might need to be more queuing here and how do we handle that?
Yeah. I think the other interesting piece of that, it's shown in green, but we're under your West Gray Road label there. You've probably already talked about this, but for the larger trucks to make that turn and head south there, you know, I think I envision things like on some of the smaller roundabouts where there's a cobbled area. Yeah, basically rollover curbing that you could put for those occasional instances and still get them around the corner. Because we do get complaints from truckers about that.
Yeah, we've run this through the computer's auto turn, like with the W B 65 and sort of checking these turning radiuses. Is there a nice sort of rollover curve in a streetscape there that's, you know, belt suspenders? That could be easily.
You know, for the, for the ones in the, however often a 53-footer tries to go. You know, for the, for the ones in the, however often a 53 footer tries to go through there, kind of thing.
Yeah, I mean, that's sort of what's a puzzle about this intersection is you're dealing with those big trucks and you're also dealing with the highway. So I think that's where kind of looking, thinking about the signals and how that plays in. And then, um, you know, this was not the first intersection design we landed on. We went through a number of these.
Oh, I know, there's been a lot of iterations, yeah.
And, and I think that's where, um, when this gets into the details and how we kind of deal with a few of those, that, that will kind of be the finishing touch.
And if we could go back to Brown Street really quickly, because I was, I was looking at, I understand that people will still have access to Aroma Joe's, but, um, it feels like we've really limited access to that business, um, in this particular design.
So we've done some queue counts on them, like how do they get queuing and all? And we think we can fit the same amount of queues they've got now and like how that kind of works through this.
But I think this particular pattern would discourage people from wandering their way through here to get to Aroma Joe's. Just a thought.
Well, I, I think they have better access on Yarmouth Road. And I think, I think this actually gives them better frontage. Because they've got, they're on essentially a one block face now, now they're on two block faces. So I think there's, you know, I mean, they're, they're a drive-through business. So I think like having good access, um, you know, that's sort of, I think, the puzzle with a few of the building types, the McDonald's, Aroma Joe's, just to be the gas stations. Like you've got these auto-centric businesses in the village. How do we make sure that they're still getting cars to their front door while, you know, doing all the other things that the, the vision for this area wants to do? Um, yeah, so I, I, you know, I, I think continuing to engage them further and bring, you know, they, they were in the camp of the charrette, like they, I think they're a, a stakeholder in this that, um, you know, we just have to continue to work with.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, the other thing you mentioned was the raised, the idea of possibly using raised sidewalks.
Yeah, this is, this is,
Raised tables at the intersection.
Tables at the intersections, you know, I mean, a lot of people are doing ADA retrofits on ramps and stuff. There's a sort of, uh, a, and I'd be interested here with the DOT folks have been experiencing too. But I'm just seeing that happening more and more where like we're building a raised crosswalk. We're normally able to just do two handicap ramps, you know? Or we're, we're kind of elevating, we're bringing the car up where, rather than kind of bringing the pedestrian down. That's been kind of a trend I've seen more and more.
I don't know if you're familiar with it. I'm sure the MDOT folks are and people here locally would. But Stevens Avenue in Portland is the example that comes to mind that uses pretty extensively, um, raised tables and intersections and crosswalks along there. And a lot of traffic goes down that road and it moves pretty evenly, um, other than the fact that, you know, there's just too many cars, so there's congestion. But that feels like, you know, you're coming down Yarmouth Hill, um, or even you're coming into the village towards Colley Hill Road that particular way. It feels like those are ways to really kind of announce that you're in a different environment now in your vehicle and in a way that, you know, isn't the old fashioned speed bump, but, um, is easy for our public works people to take care of in the winter. Um, but like you say, I think even makes it friendlier to people who are walking or bicycling.
Yeah, that's exactly right. I, I think one of the, and I could point them out because I think it's important, that gateway that you mentioned is important like that. Just sort of going from sort of a country road with, you know, sort of the landforms are what they are to like a regularized street trade, that's like the first indication on coming into something.
Yeah.
And then there might be actual a threshold and like at different points in the plan, like this, this red square, like that's sort of a threshold coming off the highway. You know, it might be the beginning of this, of this bike path, you know, that's a, you know, a half mile or three quarters of a mile outside of the center. You know, and very similarly, we're coming down the hill, there's, oh, there's actually a little pocket park there. Like there's these gateway moments.
Yep. There's clues along the way.
Yeah, now I think it's like when we come to an engineering level and a real sort of streetscape, you know, landscape design, what is the materiality of that, you know? I think that's when some of those other traffic calming devices could be utilized too. Um, and I think we're, I mean, this has been happening in Europe for 20 years now with sort of shared space, kind of, you know, other tools. I've seen that way more in the last five years happening in New England. You know, I think, you know, there's, we can look at every city and, and see some example now, I think it's happened. Uh, so I think those are tools that you could use as well.
The last thing, I just had a question. Uh, it's, it's an engineering piece. It's a, it's a, not really the design per se, but you see it in your graphic presentations, um, the absence of the overhead utilities.
There, that's a, we've talked about a lot, that a lot. I, I think there's, um, it's a big expense.
Yes.
You know, and, and I think there's a resiliency thing to it too, like how much of, you know, service interruption? How do you do, like, you know? I think there's also a coordination of redevelopment of like how, how much you transition from overhead wires in the village and, you know, utilize that to, to the village center. I think there's an opportunity to future-proof this with not just, well, you know, underground utilities electric, but also sewer and other things that might happen over the next generation in the village center. So I would encourage, um, you know, encourages this moves forward to think creatively about how to be future-proofed after that. And, you know, whether it's an extra duck bank or, you know, I think that's like the.
That's, I know that's the, the.
Yeah, but it's a big number. And I'll just be honest, like we're looking at it in downtown Portsmouth right now for like four or five blocks.
Yeah.
Like even, it's a big expense.
It's a huge expense. But I think the planning for the future underground as well as above ground is important. So that if we replace this, the stormwater system, we don't get in, we don't make putting in sewer significantly more expensive because that wasn't part of the thought process then.
Yeah, yeah. No, I think you're in a very good position, especially, you know, especially with the team that's getting, you know, Mike joined the team.
Yeah.
You know, others in the city have been thinking about this. I think the, um, you know, long term, it's like why dig it up after you've rebuilt it? So the future proof would go for it.
The last thought I guess I wanted to share is there's also a middle ground as far as the utilities are concerned too. If putting them completely underground is, you know, prohibitive to the point where we can't afford it, is moving them back off Main Street too, um, would still be an expense, but a significantly well, less of an expense than, than going underground. And would still have a big, big visual impact on, on the village itself. Just something else, I guess, to, to throw into the mix. But that was all I had for, for questions. Anyone else, Mike?
I don't have a question. I just wanted to add the follow-up to your point. Um, now that we kind of have the vision kind of, um, laid out, um, we, we have been working simultaneously on the underground utilities portion to see where we can identify what's best to, to do that and working with our engineering, uh, partner, Goral Palmer, who's done some preliminary work on this, um, about cost estimates. Because at the end of the day, moving utilities underground would be a cost for the town. Um, and so that would be something that we would have to plan for and budget for and, and drum up community support for. Um, the other one is the, the wastewater, um, system, um, sewer of some sort. Again, this is something that's been identified in the town's comprehensive plan and it's something that we continue to explore. Um, we've begun working, um, through EPA's, uh, environmental protection, federal environmental protection agencies, uh, water, um, technical assistance program. And they are providing the town free of charge technical assistance to help us evaluate options, um, for wastewater treatment. And we're considering a few options for that as, as we will be releasing an RFP soon to get help for feasibility study, which is just a, a, a general overall study to see what the feasibility. And of those, we're considering, um, if the town were to build and construct its own wastewater treatment plant, which, um, uh, the town of Wyndham is currently in the process of doing and the town of Bridgestone just recently completed. So that's something the town can consider. And then we're also considering if there's any way we could partner with some of our neighbors. Takes about a decade to get a wastewater treatment plant constructed. And so we might be past some of the timeframe where some of this work is done. So at the same time, we're including in our feasibility study the, the possibility of partnering with our neighbors in Auburn who have access to the Lewiston Auburn wastewater treatment facility that has, um, extensive capacity available for wastewater treatment. So we're gonna, as part of our feasibility study, see what it would cost to, to run potentially, um, sewer to that location, to the Auburn line. Uh, Auburn doesn't currently have sewer at the Auburn line, Auburn-New Gloucester line. And so they would be interested in working with us to extend sewer to, for their community as well as to potentially support us. And then potentially New Gloucester, uh, may or may not, uh, participate in partnership with us. And then the other one is the town of Cumberland is interested in expanding sewer out the Route 100 section of their town, um, on, up to Portland Road. And we could potentially, uh, partner with them to connect, uh, where they send their wastewater to the town of Falmouth. Um, right now, the town of Falmouth wastewater treatment plant doesn't have extensive capacity, but they, um, will be evaluating what their capacity expansions are for their development and whether or not they incorporate us. So we're, we're seeing what are the options are. The two options of connecting are something that with town support could be done much faster than a treatment plant. But if they, if they don't seem feasible, then it might take us a little bit longer. And again, that would be something that would be at the town's expense, but we would be working to develop in both cases potentially a funding strategy that involves tax increment financing and/or participation from developers, uh, in the area to help with those investments to limit the actual expense that the property taxpayer, uh, the general property taxpayer would have to, um, as part of those, those projects involving that. So I just wanted to let everyone know those are, and we'll have more details on those in the future that we'll be able to kind of report on, uh, when we have a feasibility study. Right now, we have no information about what's possible. And the feasibility study will help us to give the town council and the public that information as well.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Anyone else?
Actually just had a question on some of the other slides.
Sure.
On slide A112, which is the intersection with Colley Hill, there's this red, red line. And I just wasn't sure what, why that's differentiated.
So that, yes, good question. So that's a 12-foot sidewalk and bike path. It's a multi-use path. And that's just a graphically trying to show that's a little bit different.
Okay.
So rather than like you're, you're, you're in the village center, you've got good sidewalks, the, you know, you have some parallel parking on the street, you know? What, what we don't want to have happen is, okay, you know, there's some kids riding from where, you know, wherever, back home. That cars just hit the edge of the village and boom, hit the gas. And I think there's sort of this intermediate area that's probably, you know, is it a half mile? Is it a quarter miles or three? It's, it's three quarters, you know, that sort of zone. And this goes up to Wayne Ave where we would allow bikes and pets, pedestrians on that multi-use path. And then once we get, it's kind of far enough from the village, we might go back to just short, if you're riding a bike, you're on the, you're on the shoulder. So that was the thought process there. And I think there was enough, um, real estate really on the right of way there to do that here, so.
Yeah, I agree, it is pretty wide open there.
And I think it goes back to a lot of the conversations in the, in the townwide kind of village planning of like, where do you want to connect when you, like, where's the connections outside of the village? And, you know, if you look at some of the, you know, I, I think that's sort of the desire line that led to this as a possible solution as well.
Okay, thank you. And then I was wondering if you could just speak a little bit to the intersection with, um, Brown Street and Shaker Road and what that looks like for the monument that's currently situated there? I mean, I know we've talked about it internally, but you could just elaborate on what you've done there.
What page you are, Krista?
Um, it's slide A110.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I have floated the idea of moving it again. I've moved away from that idea. Cooler heads have prevailed on that one.
There's a little too much PTSD around.
Yeah, yeah, but that is the monument there as it exists today, that gray circle. Um, so I think with the kind of, uh, the sort of realignment of Brown and kind of nudging the intersection, we're able to keep it where it is. And I think that's the sort of, you know, I, I think long-term, this intersection, you know, I can, I'll go back to the other slide. But you have this sort of pocket park. But you go to the monument now, it's a nice flower bed, but it's not, it's not a park. It's not, like, I think there's potential for that, like, on both sides of Green, on Brown, and Brown. If you're able to have some nice parks, like actually village sort of. So that was the thought of like how we could make this work. And I think, you know, you can see here on the, on the other side of the street from the monument, there's some just sort of, uh, remnant right of way that I think is sort of how that is redeveloped or how that is utilized. I think that's, that's still an open question. But, you know, just sort of rationalizing this intersection has given, you know, given the monument a permanent home.
Right, yeah, I think that's a positive for most of the meaning.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Yeah, but good question.
Yeah, thanks, Russ.
Is the, the staying sort of in the intersection, but you've got the One Gray Center building there in the lower left, which loses its parking lot in this scenario, which I see on the opposite side is basically a trade, in other words, to some extent for that.
Back to a lot of your plan. Yeah, I, I think that, you know, that's an odd parking lot today if you go and try and park it with a triangular shape. And I think that's what led us to this, you know, one of the variables that led us to this solution is, you know, you've got to park a parking lot. Like some of these elements are already out there today. They're just poorly shaped and organized.
Yeah.
So I think that was like, all right, well, you have some teaser parking for that, that building right at the curb.
Yeah.
You know, you kind of get a, you get a much better address with like how the intersection is organized, so that, that corner. You've got the par, you know, a new park here on Brown Street. And then you have a sort of rationalized parking lot behind that could facilitate users of that whole block.
It's much more useful, I think, in this scenario than the current setup.
Yeah.
I agree.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I mean, it's radical to like kind of flip it like that. But it, it sort of, the more we kind of went through this and went around it, it makes a lot of sense.
I thought it was a clever, what's the word, basically? Brown Street's been Brown Street, that angle's been that angle for so long. For someone to actually break that mold and think that, well, we could flip flop these two things and have something significantly different was very, very thoughtful.
Yeah, yeah.
If I may add, we, we did, when we talked about this at one time, considered potentially closing Brown Street. And we, as part of our efforts, I've met with property owners on a regular basis in this area to kind of talk to them. And that was some feedback that, um, we received would kind of be detrimental. And so that's where we kind of went back to the drawing board and came up with this, uh, method. And currently, um, the, the Aroma Joe's, the One Gray Center and the McDonald's owner all kind of support this concept.
Good.
Um, they've, uh, they've, McDonald's has supported losing a drive, uh, uh, driveway and entrance. Um, I've, I've discussed with their corporate office as well as the local owner, this situation. And then the One Gray Center is a new owner that's really interested and invested in Gray and wants to see Gray succeed. Their septic is actually in the area where the parking lot is now. So we would have to, if, if we don't have wastewater by the time this comes, we would have to work to either move the septic to the other side of the building and maybe partner with them on the existing municipal parking lot. So there'll be some negotiations with property owners in this area that main DOT will work with us on, um, to, to help with some of those acquisitions and we'll be at the table to help, um, to help, you know, foster those relationships as best as possible. A lot of which I've already been working with those property owners to help keep them up to date.
Well, one of the obstacles to the Yarmouth Road work has been the right of way issue, which has just been a, a knot that everyone's, um, struggled to untie. And I think we, we break through here with that too, which is a, a good thing. And that will involve some compromises because you're just not going to be able to get the traditional right of way up to the whole extent of that. But we certainly can clarify it and sort of improve what's there. Yeah, no, I think it's, that was a very interesting idea.
Yeah, and I think Mike is right, like we did look at closing it. And I think that was, there was a, that's what I'm saying, like, there's been a lot of iterations with the team over this. And, um, it's funny, you look at really good centers of towns or cities or neighborhoods, there's usually more intersections, you know, there's kind of more side streets, there's more. And like when we landed on this, it was like, oh, wait, like this is, this is like in that.
It does that, yeah.
We've been doing it for thousands of years, like this makes more sense, you know, sort of.
The same with your center street changes.
Yeah, it's very, yeah, it's, it's in that pattern, it's sort of, oh, wait, that, that kind of makes sense for the center.
And I notice on the Colley Hill stretch, there's a, uh, across from Colley Hill, a little up the way towards Wayne Avenue, you do sort of pencil in a potential street in the future.
Yeah.
When we start through the whole Douglas Field.
Yeah, and I think that, you know, there was a number of iterations of, of this layout. But I, I think just, you know, could that shift a little bit here or there? I, I think that's, you know, the idea that there's eventually, there's a connection there. You know, perhaps there's even eventually a connection there, so.
Yeah.
You know, I think we didn't want to lose those, those kind of parts of the plan. parts of the plan that are elsewhere, so.
No, I think I agree. I think it's important that that sort of placeholders for the future just to keep it in people's minds. Yep.
Dan, actually, I do have one more question. If we go back to our slides, A102, so where West Gray is, where there's the mobile station on one side, and there's like an old gas station there that's kind of like a.
Manys.
Yeah.
Yep.
It doesn't look like there's, is the entrance through the parking lot? Is that kind of what they're saying?
There's a curb cut right here at the Manys.
Is that what that is? Okay.
That's more or less, if you, I mean, there's a very wide curb cut to kind of go there. But I think looking at how that property functions, we try to sort of, hey, this is where you could come in and out. And like, the general layout of how they're using the property now would still work. And I think that's similar to the gas station. Like, this this might have a rollover, like, there might actually be access. So so I think that's where some of these uses that are more auto-oriented, we try to coordinate as best we can those driveway accesses. And then I think a few we might close, like Mike mentioned with McDonald's. Like, there's a few that just don't work and are redundant, excuse me, in other ways. But I think that was generally kind of a, one of the kind of guiding principles was like, let's see if we can do this the best we can, but then sort of make sure the current function is is maintained.
Yeah, and we'd like to hide it as much as we could. You know, I mean, it kind of looks, you know.
Won't be there forever.
Yeah.
Very good. Is there anyone?
I had friends from Main DOT. I don't know if you want to have them come forward.
Yeah, I was gonna say, would you like to come forward?
Yeah, we have the Deputy Commissioner of the Main Department of Transportation, Dale Doughty here, and Staff Engineer Brad Foley. I think he's a staff engineer. Is that your correct title? Highway Program Manager, Brad Foley. So they're here. I'll invite Dale and them up to the podium to maybe say a few words. And since I've been here, Main DOT has definitely made the town of Gray a priority, and we appreciate that. They're working with towns all over the state, and we have direct access to the the Commissioner and the Deputy Commissioner. So it's 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 very helpful.
Thank you for coming today.
Well, you're welcome very much. And Brad's the king of highway engineers at DOT. So he's the highway engineer of highway engineers, so. Hey, a couple of things, and a couple of us have been working on this for a very long time, more than a year, a couple of years now. I got to applaud Gray. We're doing this all over the state. And a lot of times, we're in partnership, but it's a financial partnership. And Gray has really taken the burden and run forward with it. And that will pay benefits in the next phase. So a couple of things, I think we're very close working closely with Russ and others. His key word to start out with was balance. I think we've all kind of struck a balance. I think there are some details we need to kind of work out. Center Road is one of them. You know, that concept of whether that left turnout to that intersection is two-way or one-way, there's some details there because we can't back up onto the interstate. That that's something we can't do. So there's there's a few just minor details like that, I think. Glad we're not moving the monument. I've moved only been here 27 years, and we moved it twice. So that's a good thing. And I think it does make a neat space. But I was just going to address you about for a second or two is how do we get from here to pavement and bricks and all those things? You know, what are the next phases? And I'll talk about all the good sides, and then I'll talk about a couple just 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 issues you should keep in mind moving forward. So if you get to a place where this is the concept you want to move forward with, and we've got that balance, and we work with Ross, so we tweak a couple more of those things. I think we're a little concerned about with the vesperides and longevity of trees, but we can work all that out. More for more for just keeping the streetscape healthy and growing. So we can, we can work all that out. If this is a place you want to be, what we would like to have at this point in these kind of projects, DOT was always about getting there in between roads and mobility. We're now still about getting there, but we're about this kind of a balance and investing in villages and bringing back to that 50s-esque, you know, you see pictures of all the downtowns in the 50s where they were very walkable, and the wife and husband and the two children walking a little worse, whatever. So how do we get there? So I think the next phase is really getting to a place where where you're all on board. Have Russ put this in a report. There are some other details we'd want to see in the report that I know he already has, like some cross-sections, critical cross-sections in places to make sure they fit. And then what would be really nice, if the council provided a resolve on top of it. So here's a report, we resolve in general, not the details still need to be worked out, you may want to tweak some as you go. But in general, this is where the council is. This is what happened in Wyndham, and we're halfway through designing, getting ready to build Wyndham, right? Wyndham went through the same process with us. We paid for half of it. You're paying for all this, and I'll tell you the benefit of that in a moment. But we get to that place, the council sent us a resolve saying we want to move to the next phase. Here's the report, and then we set our design team on it. So some good things. Once that occurs, we, Mike and I signed an agreement back in March, I think, Anne negotiated it with me, that that set aside a pin with 250,000 of preliminary design in it. And because you've done the work on 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 Yarmouth Road, and because you've done a lot of this work, typically, there's a share in there, and that's just all DOT and federal. So we got 250,000 to start that preliminary design. We can start that, the pin's set up. It's gone through the STIP approval process, so federal highways agreed to their portion of it. And we can, we can start that almost instantaneously once we get that and start the design. We go through that preliminary design, or at least partway, and then we decide which grant we'd seek. We believe this is running now, just the streetscapes that we talked about altogether, and with a little, a year or two inflation, I think we're getting in the 25 to 27, 28 range. For some grants, that's that's the, that's the cap we compete well in. So we're in a good place if we do that. So we would design to the point where we felt we were ready to go. You guys have done the public process, so that's readiness done. You guys have signed off on it. We're in conceptual agreement. All those readiness, really, the last one is really understanding that cost and just constructability. And again, there's only a few places that we have concerns about that. We get to that place, we'd agree on a grant, we'd sign off on a grant. And then we move into final design with our consultant. And all this time, your consultant is in tow, making sure we're negotiating if we have to go to one way on something or we have to extend a turn, you know, turn lane back a little bit. We're doing it in context with the agreement. Once we apply for the grant, once we secure the grant, we move forward to the next phase. So the final design is typically with the town is 80-10-10. So we'll seek 80% federal funds. We don't always get it, but usually we do. Main has probably one of the best track records in the country because of our, because of our delegation. So we get 80% federal, we split the, we split the non-federal share. So 25 million, you can figure that out. And and if we step back, whatever that is. We'd finish the design, we'd put it out to construction and build it, coordinate with all the utilities that you decide to do. That's all part of the design process. So if you're building in provisions for sewer someday or you're building in provisions for something else, underground utilities are a bit of a quagmire. You guys already know that. I love the idea of moving back. But all those things, we'd incorporate into the design. And then we'd see through construction and building it. So that's all the good news. That's all good, that's all rolling. The not, and this isn't bad news, it's just cautionary things. You're one of quite a few communities doing this. The first few years, if you got to that point of readiness, you were pretty much not one that was at the point of readiness. And and those went through pretty well. We put them in as a raise grant, we put them in reconnect community, whatever package we put them in as. And we have such a good try, we get most of them, right? Not all of them, but most of them. Now, you, just the competition goes up every year because we have lots of communities doing exactly the same thing, getting there. I wouldn't say there's lots, but there's, you know, there's a few. So and you have some things here that make it a good candidate. There's a lot of the merit criteria that you hit. Maybe equity is a little less than downtown Portland, but walkability, rejuvenization of a historic rural downtown, because you're really rural in the federal sense. You you hit a lot of those boxes. So just just the sooner we get there, the better. And I I know I'm a pusher because I love building these things, right? I want to build it. So that's one. The other one is that the the bill that currently provides a lot of those, and I, Dale's opinion, some of them will survive. Even political turmoil, I think that, especially in Maine here, where we're rebuilding communities, and that's different than what a lot of the country is doing. I think some of them will survive. But IJA started in November of 2021. It's a five-year bill that was 22 fiscal year. You can kind of count forward. That will run out, something will replace it. But I think what will replace it will have, this is just Dale's opinion, not the department's or anywhere else, it'll still have some of those opportunities. There may be more, there may be less, really depends on the political win. So again, that's kind of something to think about. And then and the third thing to think about is, you know, this was really Commissioner Benno's brainchild. And one of the reasons I came back from Lewiston is to build this program. He and I are going to be here for some time. I don't know how long, but, you know, ride the wave while we're here. And I always imagine the next commissioner and deputy commissioner will will continue on the same sense, but there's no guarantee. So I really, like some of you that said, I've not lived here my whole life like like Anne, I haven't, but my family's from North Yarmouth. A lot of my my family's here, they still have businesses here. This this is a great project, and I've been watching downtown Gray for my whole career or most of my adult life and childhood. And it's it's just time, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good day. If you have any questions, give me a call.
All right.
Thanks, Dale.
Is there anyone else that would like to have a have a question or anyone like to speak?
I can speak to all the, all the.
Sure, absolutely, Mike.
So hello, Mike Thomas, Town Engineer. Mike Foley, I know you spoke pretty indepthly with the sanitary sewer aspect. So I'll speak specifically to the two other utilities that are brought up for overhead utilities going underground and for stormwater. As previously stated, the the one major impact or factor for going from overhead underground is the cost burden. So ideally, I I think the best strategy for that is similar to how we're looking at with sanitary sewer. We have a couple of options, you know, we're looking at in terms of connecting adjacent municipalities and, you know, do we do something or do we set up our own wastewater treatment plan similar to? And Dan, I know you mentioned those those options. Do we, you know, convert a majority of overhead utilities underground in a certain area? Or do we, you know, move the utility poles to a different area? So I think just looking at those options from a constructability standpoint, in addition to a cost burden standpoint, and go from there. Another challenge with the, with that is we have a preliminary list of, I believe, a dozen or so utility providers that all utilize those overhead utilities. So those are 12 different stakeholders with their own, you know, you know, so getting 12 different stakeholders in the room to discuss what are your restrictions or your capabilities, et cetera, it's going to be a challenge, but we'll move forward and facilitate those discussions.
The whole thing was always going to be a heavy lift.
Yeah.
So and then, speaking towards stormwater, the general philosophy there is not just looking at the village center. Obviously, that water drains out of the village core to the west. So it's not just looking at the village, it's understanding the downstream elements as well. So from that, we've, we have an internal team, myself, Doug Webster, and we've also been partnering with Will Haskell, with Goral Palmer, basically identifying any kind of areas of the stormwater system downstream that need to be either repaired or upgraded in preparation for the VTP. Two that have already been identified specifically are some culverts underneath the 95 corridor, in addition to some culverts off West Gray Road, which, to my knowledge, they, in heavy rain events, those back up and you have rainwater actually coming onto the road there. So we want to capture the full scope of, again, what repairs and approvals do we need to tackle prior to the VTP[1606.33]